I was planning on making it, but I don't see him on the list yet.
The recording has begun, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So Commissioner Mudd, could I ask you to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes from the April 5th meeting. Does anyone have any comments or?
Chairman Gann.
At the meetings, yes.
Chairman Gann, I move that we accept the April 5th Planning Commission meeting minutes as presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Any discussion on the minutes? Not hearing any. Tracy, are you in favor?
Yes.
Evelyn? Are you in favor?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson, I see that you're here now. Are you in favor of the minutes?
Yes.
And John Mudd?
Yes.
And so am I. So it passes unanimously. Thank you. Matters of discussion, we have before a stagecoach preliminary plat approval. And I move to Director Harrington to provide the staff report.
I thought I saw Tracy's hand raised.
Well, actually, I was gonna ask if the print can be enlarged, but as I put my hand, soon as I did it, it was enlarged. So whoever did that, thank you.
These old eyes.
Amazing mind thought. That's great.
Thank you.
Okay, again, good evening, Commission members. For the discussion item tonight, we have the major subdivision preliminary plat review for approval by the Planning Commission for the Stagecoach Crossing subdivision. The applicant owner is John Driggs with Stagecoach La Plata LLC. And the engineer authorized agent is Ed Carroll, engineer with Soltes Incorporated. The property in question is Zoned R5. There is currently no uses on the property. It is vacant. It is proposed for residential development. It has 266.97 acres about. To the north is residential with the Steeplechase subdivision, as well as some rural conservation under Charles County. To the south is rural conservation residential under the county. The east is rural conservation and a little bit of a commercial zone, which it all has residential right now. And to the west is also rural conservation residential under Charles County zoning. So as a little bit of a background, since we have some new members, the Stagecoach Crossing property was annexed into the town on March 26th of 1996 and assigned R21 zoning. The site then received MUD 2 or a mixed-use zoning with a traditional development neighborhood overlay, which was TND back in the, before we amended our zoning code in 2018. And that was approved in 2005. During the comprehensive zoning code and map update in 2018, the property was rezoned to R5, which is the 5,000 square foot residential category. On October 7th of 2021, staff had a pre-application meeting with the applicant to discuss the proposed development. And then they submitted their application for preliminary plat in February of 2022. So the proposed development is consisting of 636 dwelling units with six phases proposed. As shown in the table in my staff report, there are 322 single-family dwellings, 254 townhomes, and 60 duplex units. They're also providing recreational open space amenities. Forest conservation is being conserved by the majority on the site. There will be two main access points, one to Stagecoach Road directly, and a secondary access through the Steeplechase neighborhood to the north that'll connect to the Buckeye Circle and exit out Catalpa onto the State Highway 301. The staff did go through the town code. We looked at Chapter 108 Resource Protection Standards and show that they are protecting all of the sensitive areas on the site. They are, overall, the site with the 266.97 acres have shown that 175.57 of it will be cleared and 91.20 acres will be retained that will also protect sensitive habitats and wetlands, streams, steep slopes, etc. on the site. Streams, there are a couple of stream crossings that are proposed, and those will need to be reviewed and approved by the Maryland Department of the Environment and Army Corps of Engineers. And they've also shown the buffers for wetlands and streams as required by the code, so that is in compliance with that section. Stormwater management, they have done the initial step one, concept stormwater management. Step two and step three will need to be provided along with the engineering plans prior to the issuance of any grading permits and prior to final plat. For streets and sidewalks, they are in compliance with the streets and sidewalks regulations. As noted previously, we have adopted by policy at this point using Charles County standard details. So they are utilizing. Yeah, so they are utilizing the Charles County standard details with five-foot-wide sidewalks. And all sidewalks will also be ADA accessible with ramps at each intersection. Traffic impact study will be required by Charles County Government, along with an access permit onto Stagecoach Road. They did submit scoping documents to the county and the state. But other than that, at this point, any of those reviews will be done by the county and the state directly, since we do not have an adequate public facilities ordinance. Under Chapter 173, dedication and reservation of parkland, in accordance with this section, approximately 11.72 acres or 5% of the site is required to be reserved. However, they will be providing 152.53 acres or approximately 65% of open space, which includes parks, a clubhouse, nature trail system, and village greens. As noted on Sheet 1, General Note 15 and 17, the homeowners of saves association will be responsible for maintenance of all open space area and recreational facilities. Under the preliminary plat, I've noted that the preliminary plat was submitted in compliance with the drafting standards. They did do a forest delineation, which was approved in February of 2022, and a preliminary forest conservation plan, which was approved on April 27th of 2022. The final forest conservation plan will be required at each phase of development with the final plat or prior to final plat approval. In accordance with the town's school seat allocation policy, we are not allocating school seats at this moment in time, but we are looking to see how many are required, so we can add them add them to our allocation list and waiting list. So as noted, they will be in pool number one, which is both proposed subdivisions consisting of at least 50 lots. And based on the current Charles County yield factor, the subdivision would require approximately 299 school seat allocations. These allocations will be reevaluated at each final plat for the Planning Commission's consideration before actual approval. As stated in Chapter 173-96, the Planning Commission may not approve a final plat of subdivision unless the town has made an allocation of school seat capacity. Under Waters and Sewers, the site is in compliance with our Water and Sewer chapter. They did do a breakdown of the water and sewer capacity that will be estimated. This will be fine-tuned with the engineering plans. But they did provide those totals, which is shown in my staff report and the table. We estimate on average for a single dwelling unit, whether it's a single-family townhome or duplex, approximately 250 gallons per day per equivalent dwelling unit. So in total, they'd be looking at 159,000 gallons per day. This has been evaluated by McCrone and our operations departments initially, and it has been shown that there is capacity in the system with the upgrades that we are currently doing to accommodate the development. Under the residential zoning regulations, we have three different sets of requirements for each of the different units. They are in compliance with all of them. I did put a note under the duplex that in the town code, you see that the lot area is 5,000 square feet. But that is per dwelling unit size. So they actually are in compliance overall with the duplex requirements. I know it's a little confusing. But I did show the typical lot layout. So you could see what they're proposing as a general guide for each of their dwelling unit types. For the comprehensive master plan, the site is in compliance with the overall goals and actions of the 2020 Comprehensive Plan. The land use map labels the site as medium-density residential, and as noted, the R5 zoning designation is medium-density residential. The neighborhood will provide onsite recreational amenities, open space, sidewalks, and interparcial connections where feasible. Of the environmental features on the site are being preserved to the greatest extent possible, and any disturbance must be reviewed and approved by the Maryland Department of the Environment. Traffic impacts will be reviewed by Charles County Government and the State Highway as needed in accordance with their adequate public facilities ordinances. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat in accordance with the town code and the 2020 Comprehensive Plan. And I am available for questions, and we do have the applicant online should you have any questions of them.
Okay, so move to the commissioners. Any questions or comments of Director Harrington or the applicant?
Chairman Gann, this is Commissioner Evelyn Bryant Ward. Janine, can you just explain to me again about the duplex dimensions?
Yeah, so it's a little confusing. When you look at the zoning code, when you look at a duplex, it has a lot area of 5,000 square feet. That is basically for the, it's really difficult to explain. You're kind of dividing that amongst the two houses since they're attached. It kind of works like the townhome. If you look at it, like the front lot width for each unit would need to be at least 40 feet. And each.
So when your note says that each dwelling unit would need 2,500 square feet, and they're proposing 5,000 square feet for it, they, I mean, yeah, 5,000, that's the 2,500 square feet times two.
Correct.
Okay, I'm clear. Thank you.
We do need to clear up in our code, though. It is a little confusing.
I have a question. As you mentioned, both in your report and verbally, one of the access points is through the north to Steeplechase, which is a different neighborhood. Has that all been worked out? Is there any issue with ensuring that that access will be available?
No, it's actually been proposed from the beginning. So if you look at the actual Steeplechase development, they have a stubout, and if you go back and look at the final plat for the last one we did for the Phase 2, Section 2, Phase 4, or whatever it is, that very last final plat that we did, you'll see the stubout that they have shown on there to provide that connection.
Okay.
So it's always been planned to connect the roadway and to connect the water and sewer lines through there.
Great. Are there other questions, comments from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman John Mudd, I guess I have a question for Mr. Carroll if he's online. Ed, the question I have has to do with your commitment to do a traffic impact analysis for Charles County and State Highway Administration. Is that correct?
Mr. Carroll?
So I don't know if he's able to speak at this time. I can confirm that we have been in constant communication with Charles County Government and State Highway Administration. They will be required to do a traffic impact study for Charles County at a minimum. I know the state was looking to evaluate what the impacts would be to Route 301. But they will be required to do that, and they are submitting those documents as required.
All right, that's reassuring. I guess the question that only the applicant can answer is, once those studies are completed and they've analyzed the 301 entrance and they've analyzed the access to Old Stagecoach Road, as well as the adequacy of Old Stagecoach Road, is the developer committed to making any improvements that those studies determine are necessary to provide adequate traffic service? So that's really a question that I have in terms of what the position of the applicant would be in terms of meeting those APF requirements, although, again, although they're not part of the town approval. The unique nature here is that we have kind of a disconnect between the project, being in the town of La Plata, and the road impacts occurring within the county and related to State Highway.
If the county is requiring them to do any improvements, they will have to do it because they will need to get an access permit from Charles County Government onto Stagecoach Road, Old Stagecoach Road. So they would have to provide any mitigation that would be required as part of that.
Okay. And again, trying to understand how that decision and action plan on the part of the developer to meet those road requirements tie to the town's grant of an entitlement for this project.
It doesn't directly tie in, but basically, we would check to make sure that Charles County Government had approved an access permit before we issued any of our, you know, our final approvals or permits.
Right. All right. So you're suggesting Charles County has the control factor over those improvements.
Correct.
And State Highway.
Correct.
In conjunction with what the town of La Plata has approved.
Absolutely. It's the same as if any of the projects that are located along Washington Avenue. If they're required to come out onto a county road, they do have to do a traffic impact study, provide mitigation, and get an access permit from Charles County Government. And we do require that we receive those approvals before we will issue ours.
All right, that's very good. Clarify this for me. Steeplechase, the whole premise of that original project was two access points, the current one that's on 301, as well as this interconnection with Stagecoach. Is that, was that the basis of their access plan?
Yes.
Okay. So then here comes Stagecoach, and again, to meet their two access requirements, again, they're going to access Old Stagecoach Road, as well as be served by the interconnection. So really, the two projects are are using each other as an alternate way to access their projects.
Yes, they did have to include several other developments in their kind of background for their scoping documents and
Right.
speak into account all of those lots.
Okay. All right, and I guess we still don't have Mr. Carroll available? I guess not. The only other question, and this is just a snapshot opinion from him in terms of what he foresees as the potential difficulty in obtaining the stream crossing permits related to the project. And of course, there's two primary stream crossings related to the project and are both critical to interconnect the two primary sections of the project, as well as all of the traffic interconnections that are necessary. So again, if he's not available, that's fine. It was just a curiosity what his opinion, you know, would have been on that, so.
I'm pretty sure, if I recall correctly, oh, Sue, you're on. You can, you can speak to that.
Commissioner Mudd, Ed Carroll's on. You just can't hear him. So you're gonna, I'm gonna apologize because I'm translating. He said that these crossings have been permitted before, and he's holding the same crossing locations.
Okay, that's reassuring. Appreciate that information.
They were permitted in 2009.
All right.
Any other comments or questions, Commissioner Mudd?
Not at this time.
Any comments or questions from other commissioners? Okay, the staff has recommended approval of this preliminary plat. Can I entertain a motion?
Chairman Gann.
Yes, Evelyn?
I move to approve the preliminary plat as presented.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion with a slight revision to it. And it would be simply to ask that the results at some time in the future of the traffic study and what Charles County and the State Highway are going to be requiring, at least be part of a presentation at some time in the future, just so the Planning Commission, just so, you know, from my comfort level, we understand how all of the pieces will occur for this project.
Director Harrington, isn't that our normal process?
For providing that background data, it's not a general part of the town's approval process as far as the plats are concerned. I'm happy to work with the applicant in Charles County to make sure that, you know, once we get to the final plat portion, we provide you with that data.
Yeah, and again, I'm not trying to be difficult with this. Alls I'm suggesting is that at some point in the future, after all the moving parts have been settled, it would be nice to have a report at a La Plata Planning Commission meeting, updating the board on what the end result of that issue is. Not that it's subject to change or anything, but it's just keeping this board apprised of all the moving parts for this project. I think it's negligent for us to just turn our head away from that issue and not be concerned what the net result will be in the long term for the project. So it's just informational is what I'm asking in the future, so.
We can certainly provide that information. It's difficult to tie that to the approval since it's not a town function. So we are going by our town code and our comprehensive plan to provide this approval and motion. I can assure you that we can provide updates as they are available. But like I said, we do not have an adequate public facilities ordinance. The town has no control whatsoever over this review or the outcome as far as the roadway and mitigation that's required.
I understand that and appreciate that, and I appreciate your commitment to providing information when it becomes available. And again, it's just out of curiosity. I understand we don't have an APF ordinance. We need to have one soon. Would be nice amongst all the other things you're doing. But we'll go that way.
So the original motion is to approve the preliminary plat as presented. Only the preliminary plat is what's in question tonight. So are you seconding that motion because I didn't make an amended motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we have.
Seconding that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and it's properly seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, we'll go to a vote. This Commissioner Sampson, yea or nay?
Yea.
Evelyn?
Yea.
John?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
And I also. So it passes unanimously. To the representatives of the applicant, thank you very much for your presence this evening. And Director Harrington, thank you for that staff report.
You're welcome.
We now move on to the 2021 Town of La Plata Annual Report. Director Harrington, you have a summary to provide?
I will very briefly go through the 2021 annual report. Obviously, as noted in the cover letter, this is due every year by July 1st to the Maryland Department of Planning. Within the draft annual report that I have on the agenda, we go through all of the different meeting agendas for anything that's development-related. This year, you'll notice I did add mayor and council. It's been brought to my attention that there had been some questions about annexations and what's been done. So I wanted to make sure to include any meeting agenda items that had to relate to annexations, code adoption that depicts development review, any of those types of things. So you'll see, I did add the mayor and council agenda items. I also went into Planning Commission, and I changed up the members list a little bit since we had some overlap during the calendar year. This is based on the calendar year of January 2021 through December of 2021. So I put a list together that showed the start term and the end term of each member, so that way they could see the transition that happened in the middle of the year since we had an election. So I also did that for the Board of Appeals and the Design Review Board and Legislative. If you guys see anything that I messed up in there, please let me know. I think I scoured through all of our agenda and got everything in there. I did a brief overview as far as our Keep La Plata Beautiful initiatives, which starts on page 11. Just to kind of give them an update on our, how we're trying to take steps towards social, economic, and environmental sustainability, which is a big part of our comprehensive plan and a lot of the initiatives by the state. So you can see that we've created a Keep La Plata Beautiful Committee, an arts work group, a tree advisory work group, a youth environmental stewardship work group. We're working through a, we did the Sustainable Maryland Municipal Certification Program in June of 2021. And we're also a Tree City and Bird City, so we've been doing an urban tree canopy study, which is continuing through this year. And so I just wanted to give them a brief update on how we're starting to implement all of those groups in the town. Looking at planning implementation and development process, I did a summary of the code amendments and since and noted that we are looking to update more sections of our code, especially through Chapter 191, including the adequate public facilities ordinance, revising the sign code, reviewing parking regulations, evaluating residential zoning designations for compliance with the priority funding area. That's not one that I've really discussed in depth with the Planning Commission yet. I've been having a lot of conversations with the Maryland Department of Planning and Charles County Government, because as we're annexing these single lots into the town for failed septics, they are not meeting the priority funding area regulations per the state of Maryland. And if they're not designated priority funding area, they are not qualified to apply for the Bay Restoration Grant funding to help connect to water and sewer. I don't quite understand why it's this difficult to get priority funding area, especially with the smart growth initiatives and trying to get people off of septic systems. But it is what it is. And so they basically told me that our residential zoning designations do not fit in with the smart growth, priority funding area initiatives as far as the density is concerned. So I'm going to work with the Maryland Department of Planning to get some samples, some examples of what other municipalities have done. Because it's very important for when someone has a failed septic and they're trying to annex into the town to get that designation so they can get funding. If they don't get priority funding area and don't get the funding, I have to apply for a priority funding area exception request through the Maryland Department of Planning that can take up to six months. So when someone has a failed septic, that six months is very precious, and we are noticing that it's become a very big problem. So it might be time to kind of look at our residential zoning designations and how we can assist homeowners that want to annex into the town for failed septic systems. So that will be something I'll be bringing forward to you in the near future, as well as a form-based code for the downtown redevelopment area to try and make development easier and promote economic development in the downtown. Noted our Chapter 108 Resource Protection Standards that was approved. Noted that we had one annexation that was actually effective in 2021 for 5780 Crane Highway. And noted the hospital campus zone that we adopted in December of 2021 and became effective of January 2022. Did a brief overview of our GIS system, our technical review team. And then looking at process improvements, we have a lot that we want to do. We've made a few steps so far on getting on social media, Planning Department Facebook page. I am providing monthly development updates on the town's website. There's a quick link on the main page of the website that you can click on and kind of stay up to date on what's happening with our boards and commissions, what's currently under construction. It just gives a little bit more information for the public to be able to see what's going on. We're continuing to look at our forms and applications, looking at our permitting software. Last night, I actually took a proposal to the town council. Last night, I actually took a proposal to the town council to look into changing our permitting software to a new one called MUNICITY. We've been having some issues with our current EnerGov product, and it is not functioning the way that it was intended to function or as we thought it would function. So we've gotten the consensus from council to proceed with MUNICITY. And so hopefully, in six to eight months, we'll have a functioning permitting software that will have a citizen portal, so people can pay online, submit online, and kind of ease that process for our applicants. But again, we'll see how those kind of unravel as we go through. Did a summarization of our permits, so you can see they, their big concerns as far as the state is new residential and new commercial. So we had 112 new residential dwellings that were actually issued permits in 2021. And for new construction, we had three, which are all related to the Hawthorne Commercial Center and the Rosewick Corner Shopping Center that have been approved by the planning commission. In total, we had 1,027 permits issued in 2021. I also did a note in this report, the state, I found out, doesn't really care because they're just looking at the 2021 numbers. But I did find that there were some discrepancies with the new residential permit information over the past several years. I think this is partly due to human error and switching permitting software in 2016. So I did provide a summary of the correct number of issued residential dwelling units in the table, and that was going back through by hand and counting each of the new residential permits that we'd issued. So hopefully, that at least gets us to a better point as to our past history. For school seats, I've noted in here that the town really functions on a fiscal year basis, or we're supposed to be functioning on a fiscal year basis for school seats. The town council did allocate 100 school seats for the FY '22 school year, or yeah, for the FY '22 fiscal year, and that we will utilize the Charles County yield factors as they are adopted each year. A complete breakdown of the allocations that we did for fiscal year 2022 are in Appendix B. But I did do a breakdown of the number that you could say were allocated during 2021 based on the number of building permits that were issued. This does take out Hawthorne Green, which is a senior living community and does not count towards school seat allocation. So you can see in calendar year 2021, we had six single-family detached homes, 72 townhomes, for a total of 78 units that counted towards school seat allocations. So that would be 37 school seat allocations using the Charles County yield factor, as shown below on page 15. I also, I've started to look into doing a development capacity analysis. I haven't quite gotten to the point where I'm comfortable with the data that I have to provide accurate, an actual capacity analysis. But I did go through, and I compared the total number of dwellings that were built each year through the Maryland Department of Assessment and Taxation, and the number of building permits that were issued physically by the town. So you can kind of see the difference between how many permits we issued and how many were actually built. So it is interesting to see through the years that we may have issued more building permits, but they didn't really build as much that year, where they may have built a lot more, and we didn't quite issue as many permits. So it's interesting to kind of see that comparison between what's been issued and what was actually built. If you take that data and you plug it in, I used Excel to do a kind of projection, and they have high and low and kind of midline projections to see where we might be headed with permit issuance and the number of dwellings that may be built over the next five years. So those are just some, you know, projections to kind of see where we could head based on our historical data. And then, of course, in Appendix A, I have the 2021 issued permits by month. With that, I don't think I'll go through every single thing, but hopefully, you've had a chance to read through it. And if you have any questions, please let me know. We do have a little bit of time before this, we need to submit to MDP if we need to do any corrections. And then I'll just need, Mike, I'll need to have you sign it so I can send that out.
I have two. I'm getting some really weird. Okay, I have two nitpick comments, because this was a really good document. If you could show us the signature plate page, please?
The cover letter?
Yes. Is, for the copies, under Susan, I don't know how to pronounce it, Arias, Joseph Griffiths. Is that spelled correctly, Joseph?
No, it's not. Thank you.
And then on page 12. Paragraph headed process improvements at the bottom, first line. I'm not sure why the word however is in there at the end of the line. Am I reading this sentence correctly?
I think I need to, I think that was one of the things where I went back and deleted what I was going to say. So I think it should just be changed. There are several process improvements proposed in the upcoming, and I should say, calendar year, including working on transparency for the public and you live in social media to reach a greater audience.
Okay, I like the word including better than however, so.
Yeah.
Other questions, comments from the commissioners? So since I'm expected to sign this, I would like support of the commissioners in that regard. So I ask for a motion to accept this document for signature?
Is it finished yet, Janine? I thought there was some more work to be done.
No, so not for the annual report. I actually called the state of Maryland, because I thought our development capacity analysis was due this year, and they informed me that it's not due this year. It's due next year. So I'm done.
Okay.
I'm done for the time being.
Okay.
So I just need to make these couple of corrections, and then I can send that back out.
And Chairman Gann, what is it that you're asking for?
I'm asking for support from the commission that I signed this document.
I'm in support of you signing it.
Okay, I will consider that a motion. Can I hear a second, please?
Oh, do you want a motion? That's what I was asking you. Did you want a motion or did you want a consensus? Is a motion required?
Consensus is probably required. I guess I could ask, is there any commissioner objecting to my signing this document? Okay, not hearing any. I guess we can conclude. We have consensus that I can sign this document. And then Director Harrington, you and I will, I guess, set up a time. I can show up at the office to do that.
Yep.
Okay, moving on to the agenda, matters of information, planning department update.
Short and sweet. We have some upcoming projects. Townhomes of Potomac Square, which is a major subdivision of 27 townhomes, I believe, if I'm remembering off the top of my head. That was annexed in 2019, and they hit a couple snags, but I think they're ready to move forward with their preliminary plat, so that'll be coming before you. Steeplechase, their Phase III major subdivision preliminary plat will be coming to you on July 5th. They have gone through several rounds of town comments, and this actually dates back to 2018. And then they revived that. So they've finally gotten that to a place where they're ready to move forward. And as noted, Chapter 191 and the many code revisions that I'm looking to do, I'm trying to figure out the best way to do this. I think in the, like, in the past, we've done the review of the individual sections. But once we are getting ready to adopt Chapter 191, I think I would prefer to do the repeal and replace in full, because when you try to send in the individual sections to update on our MUNICODE website, it doesn't work. So I think I'd prefer to do a full repeal and replace, but just in, you know, review the individual sections, so that way you guys don't get overwhelmed, and then kind of do a final review, and then take that to the planning commission, or to the town council for an actual code revision.
I would ask you to consider other things that might be coming from applicants so that the meetings can be manageable when we cover that stuff. I mean, we want to make sure that we give attention to these updates, just as we would to an applicant. So we need to make sure that we don't cram the meetings with too much stuff.
Absolutely. And that actually ties into, I'll get down to that in just a minute. And again, just some new business updates for you. Bird City Records opened at 6 St. Mary's Avenue. Starbucks did an interior remodel, which they got their occupancy permit for. Landmark Financial Services opened up at 30A Shining Willow Way. The Aesthetic Boutique moved to 201 Centennial Street, D1. Let Us Be Frank moved into 110 Charles Street, and Staker Strong Studio moved into 9375 Chesapeake Street, Suite 221. So check those out on the, online and see what they have to offer. As far as matters of information, I know the council has been, and the planning commission have both been involved with annexation petitions. I just wanted to update you that the Villages of Rosewick was adopted and will become effective. I can't remember the exact date, but 45 days from when they adopted it. So that's moving forward. The Hub had a public hearing last month at the town council, and they will be going back on June 21st to finalize that public hearing process. The council did hold the record open for the public until the 16th. So if anyone wanted to submit comments, they have until the 16th. And is it 4:00 PM, Greg?
No, it's 12 o'clock noon.
12 o'clock noon on June 16th to get comments in. And Hawthorne Yards will be moving forward. And again, Greg, I don't remember if you know what day that's going for public hearing.
Hawthorne Yards is also going on June 21st for public hearing.
June 21st. So that will be the initial public hearing for Hawthorne Yards. Again, as I noted, I'm working on a development capacity analysis. I wanted to make sure that the data that I have as a base will support future projections. That's why I went through the trouble of trying to go back and find our historical data. And I'm currently going through all of SSTAT property records to kind of look at what residential dwelling capacities we have existing, what could be proposed, and take into account the existing town boundary and the municipal growth area. So we also wanted to take into consideration water and sewer capacity, as well as school seat allocations, for how this capacity analysis is going to play out. So it's a work in progress. It's a lot of work. So it's taking me a little bit longer than I initially anticipated. As I noted, the urban tree canopy study, the actual inventory part is complete. We will be meeting on Friday to start looking at setting up meetings for public participation and drafting the initial draft of the study. School seat allocations, that'll be going before the town council to get the fiscal year 2023 determination on the number of school seat allocations that will be made available. I received the 2021 enrollment numbers this morning by the Board of Education. And then I did listen to the Board of County Commissioners meeting this morning to hear what the county's overview of their school seat allocations was. So I will provide all of that data to the town council, and then I'll also update the planning commission, hopefully in July, when we have our next meeting, to kind of tell you what happened with that. As I noted, development updates are being posted on the town's website and Facebook, so everyone knows what's going on, working on all the draft code revisions. And that's really all I have, unless you have any specific questions for me.
Any questions or comments for Director Harrington on the department update? Not hearing any. Thank you very much for that, Janine. We'll now go to Councilperson Bryant Ward for an update on the town council.
I don't have any updates for you, Chairman Gann, other than the fact that we have started our Friday night concert series as of May 27th. That one got canceled, but we did have the one last Friday, and we had a farmer's market in the afternoon as well over there on Friday. I'm not sure if that's going to continue, but it went well.
Can you guarantee that kind of weather, like you had this last Friday? All the time, boy, it was beautiful.
No.
Okay, any questions or comments for Evelyn? Okay, this is where I ask the question, is there anything further to bring up for the good of the commission? And I have one question. I was prompted by this question by looking at the annual report. I really like the way that you listed the commissioners and their terms, and it prompts a question. I see Commissioner Mudd's term ends in July. What's our process for dealing with that?
Oh, yeah, because he did a, he filled a vacancy, I believe.
Right.
I don't know off the top of my head. I think it's just a matter of what does the town code say?
Well, he has one more meeting to attend under that term, so we've got some time to visit if you want to, if you could take that as a homework, please?
Absolutely, because it should be, it'll be under Chapter 40 Planning Commission.
Okay, is there anything else to be brought up for the good of the commission this evening? Hearing nothing. I appreciate everyone's involvement this evening, and hereby adjourn the meeting. It is 6:47. Thank you very much, and see you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.